Orders is several reading. Number one ordinance to amend and supplement the revised general ordinances of the city of New Brunswick, this is in relation to police department fees. Number three ordinance to amend and supplement the revised general ordinances of the city of New Brunswick, this is in relation to dog parks. We have ordinance in first reading. An ordinance to amend and supplement the revised general ordinances of the city of New Brunswick, this is in reference to police department fees. Number two an ordinance to amend and supplement the revised general ordinances of the city of New Brunswick, this is in relation to at thirty-five Old School Bar. An ordinance to amend and supplement the revised general ordinances of the city of New Brunswick, title for vehicles and traffic, this is to add to downtown street. An ordinance to rescind the useful pointed appropriation limits and establish a cap bank. Number five an ordinance to amend and supplement the revised general ordinances of the city of New Brunswick, this is in reference to amend recreation fees, lack football. And number six an ordinance to amend and supplement the revised general ordinances of the city of New Brunswick, this is in relation to illness and obstruction, and this is to add lead-based paint inspections. We have resolutions one to forty-three, number one up for agenda amendment, two up for approval, three authorized approval for the blue tax sales certificates, four up for amendment resolution R one two two one twenty-one, this is in relation to additional amount of five thousand, the full normal round on doorstep. Number five resolution to asset or objective sale of your property, this is in reference to A eight A, Summer Street and three fifty-two Delance Street. Six approved request for street closing requested by Rutgers. Number seven approved request for use of city property requested by New Brunswick Recreation. Eight approved request for street closing requested by Rutgers. Nine approved request for use of city property requested by Valerades, Bochum, and Proddus. Number ten approved request for use of city property requested by Paul Robinson Community School and Yards. Eleven approved request for use of city property and use of city sidewalk requested by Livingston Elementary School. Number twelve approved request for use of city property and street closure requested by Bolton High Years of New Brunswick. Thirteen approved request for use of city property requested by Garden State Track Club. Fourteen approved amendment by no resolution, R one one two one one seven, it's a change order, it's a credit. Fifteen authorized purchase by police department from Micro Strategies Inc. Sixteen authorized tax collector to transfer all payments on several tax I U T V accounts. Number seventeen approved agreement with Morgan Johnson University Hospital. Eighteen approved resolution authorizing acceptance and execution of the grant and agreement with Minnesota's County Office of Arts and History. Nineteen authorized purchase by the Division of Parks and Shade Tree, this is from J C W Inc., doing business as natural doing long care. Twenty authorized purchase by the Division of Parks and Shade Trees from J C P Inc., doing business as natural doing long care. Twenty-one approved resolution to refer an amendment of the zoning ordinance to the planning board to review and report, this is in reference to site regulations, growing these laws to permit fees. Twenty-two approved resolution to refer an amendment to resume all the zoning ordinance to the planning board for review and report, reference to site plan exemptions, number plans required for submission and traffic impact statement fees. Twenty-three authorized agreement with New Brunswick tomorrow. Twenty-four approved amendment of resolution zero two three forty-four, the reason is for new dates. Twenty-five resolution for creating twenty twenty-three reserve for uncollected taxes. Twenty-six city of New Brunswick twenty twenty-three municipal park, this is the introduction which will be on April fifth, and the public hearing will be May third. Twenty-seven authorized purchase by the police department from Micro Strategies Inc. Twenty-eight approve over contract with Redding Hour Trucking. Twenty-nine approved title, thirty-nine agreement between DAS two, Jersey A O C, and the city of New Brunswick, this is for the New Brunswick Police Department enforcement of motor vehicles and traffic regulations. Number thirty housing authority for three appointment, this is a date for Paula. Thirty-one approved refund of animal surrender fee to Enver One. Thirty-two approve over contract with A W Environmental Services and with Bay Hill Environmental, this is for lead inspection, this is two. Thirty-three approved amendment of resolution zero two two twenty-one, the reason is an additional amount of seventy-five hundred in salt electric. Approved over contract with our H Terminal Associates, this is for one rush shipper. Thirty-five approved by council, Ronald Bondello Esquire for special counsel. Thirty-six approved over a board of contract with A Axon Enterprise. Thirty-seven approved resolution authorizing an interlocal agreement between the city of New Brunswick and the New Brunswick Council Authority. Thirty-eight approved over contract with C T S Group Architecture Planning E P A. Thirty-nine approved over contract with consulting and municipal engineers, doing business as C M A Associates. Forty amendment to bank depositories and cash management plan for coming year twenty twenty-three. Forty-one approved amendment of procedure zero eighty-two two seven with enterprise automation. Forty-two approved request for street closing requested by Antia Christian Church. Forty-three approved request for use of property, city property requested by Alfas High Lane of Robert University. And that's it. Then we have dates to remember, the city council agenda review session, Wednesday, April nineteenth, April area, the city council meeting immediately following that. And at this time, we need full order.
Councilmember Anderson.
Here.
Councilmember Castaneda.
Here.
Councilmember Fleming.
Here.
Councilmember Gaskin.
Yes.
Councilmember Secor Ludwig.
Here.
Council vice president Egan.
Here.
Council president Escobar.
Here. Please be advised that the notice requirements of the Open Public Meeting Act has been complied with and satisfied that in that thorough notice, which gave sufficient notice of the time and place and conduct of all public meetings of the municipal council of the city of New Brunswick, has been filed with the city clerk, that can place on a appropriate board in city hall, and has been transmitted to the official newspaper for the city of New Brunswick, namely the Home News Review. I fight the unions unified the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all. Please join me as in people we celebrate Earth Day. Let's take a moment to reflect and be reminded to dedicate our time, resources, and energy to solving environmental issues affecting the world. Thank you.
Motion to accept the list.
Second. Councilmember Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Castaneda.
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming.
Yes.
Councilmember Gaskin.
Yes.
Councilmember Secor Ludwig.
Yes.
Council vice president Egan.
Yes.
Council president Escobar.
Yes. Madam Chair, has the correspondence come direct to the appropriate departments?
Yes, Madam President, the correspondence received by the city clerk's office was forwarded to the appropriate departments for further action.
Thank you. We have no public hearings at this time, we're going to ordinance for discussion on second reading, we have ordinance number one, an ordinance to amend the redevelopment plan for the New Brunswick downtown redevelopment plan area in the city of New Brunswick. Does anybody of my fellow council members wish to have any questions or wish to comment on this? We are preparing to open the public hearing on ordinance only, up to five minutes per person, one time off. If any members of the public wishes to speak to the council on this ordinance, please approach the council.
Hi, Ms. Daniel Moore. Okay, which development is this for? Is that the one around the corner, or this is another one?
Sure, so this is a redevelopment plan for the entire downtown, there's no specific projects attached to it, there will be hopefully future projects that utilize this plan as their basis for development, but there are no specific projects attached to this right now whatsoever, it's just a plan for future projects.
Well, I actually pray due to where I know I heard a license for marijuana, and I surely prayed not to see any liquor license being down there, due to where, like I said, it's becoming a huge problem, due to where with the council turning in, like I said, a lot of places, from these bars to these liquor stores, to see these in front of our schools, so that's the one thing I will pray, that, come on, enough with liquor license throughout New Brunswick, due to where, like I said, wow, do you, this is in front of the school, the Technic High School, what, people dumping loads of beer also, please, like I said, my main concern, you said you didn't say what was specific yet, and like I said, my main concerns, please, due to where nothing with liquor to keep seeing all of these, what locations where with, what, polluting our areas, due to where people are not cleaning up after themselves.
Can we send you anything else, any specific?
Due to, well, due to where, like I said, I, you said not, you're not specific about what's going to, where, where, and then certain locations, due to where, I have to say, wow, with the, what the rent must be too high, it's sad to see how a lot of our stores that's been here such a long time are going out of business, so, wow, I think, due to where, wow, please, due to where, lower the price, speak to the owners into downtown areas, due to where, wow, you have at least, what, how many empty spaces downtown now, due to where, I'm just looking for something good, good, to bring in families, to see more people around gatherings, that, that's my comment, but please, like I said, enough with liquor, that what you keep putting everywhere, and like I said, wow, you wouldn't want this on your property, and like I said, in front of schools, enough with the liquor license.
Thank you, Ms. Daniel, anybody else who gives particular ordinance?
Yes, good evening, Charlie Cradaville, Sedam Street, New Brunswick. I wanted to say that I did attend the planning board meeting where this first came up, and I generally appreciate some of the adjustments that are proposed. That said, this is an enormous redevelopment plan covering basically the entire downtown, and I'm just a little puzzled as to why some areas are not included in it, and the ones that are, are, you know, most of it, I would suggest, has already been redeveloped, is there a reason that areas that have already had redevelopment projects are not being removed from the redevelopment area? Would that potentially impact their long-term tax exemptions for those developers, or is there some other reason why those areas are continuing to be included in the plan, even though they've already had massive redevelopment projects?
Ms. Dominguez. That's mostly just for keeping a contiguous map for the area, we don't foresee anybody coming to knock down the helldress or any of these buildings that have been already formally redeveloped, they were redeveloped under really unique circumstances at their time, and would have a very hard time arguing to be able to be included under this, it's mostly just for the simplicity sake of including all of the C four, except for those periphery areas that I mentioned at the planning board, a couple of blocks that are on the margins that we're not sure we want to include for this type of development at this point in time.
Thank you, Ms. Dominguez.
Thank you.
I have a question for the council president.
Yes.
Mr. Dominguez, can you please clarify the control parameters for the off-street parking associated with this redevelopment plan?
Right, so, the plan allows under certain circumstances that developments can be in facilities nearby, within a certain distance, I think it's five hundred feet, of the main site, if necessary, to accommodate parking through existing parking facilities and structures that are either owned by or controlled by the redeveloper, controlled meaning more of like a broad sense, not in direct ownership, but it could be sort of through a cross-access agreement, or some kind of shared contract that would have to be codified as a condition of approval, and then they would be able to utilize that as additional parking for their site to meet their standards.
Thank you. At this time, the ordinance is closed.
Move the ordinance, second.
Councilmember Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Castaneda.
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming.
Yes.
Councilmember Gaskin.
Yes.
Councilmember Secor Ludwig.
Yes.
Council vice president Egan.
Yes.
Council president Escobar.
Yes. Ordinance number two an ordinance to amend and supplement the revised general ordinances of the city of New Brunswick, title ten vehicles and traffic, chapter ten point sixteen stopping standing of parkings, schedule twenty-nine, title middle parking, parking meters, chapter ten point twenty-eight residential parking permits, schedule forty-one parking by permit only designated areas. Does anybody of my fellow council members have any questions or comments on this particular ordinance? Have we none? Again, we are preparing to have the public hearing on these ordinance, only we have only five minutes.
Daniel Moore, due to where, would you be able to tell me where this location is?
Ms. Dominguez.
Sure, so, the, the first part with the parking meters would be on Bartlett Street, which is sort of to match the area, Sykert Street on that side of where Rutgers has the College Ave Campus Center and the parking lot behind it is metered, so is Race Street that splits and used to connect out to College Ave and doesn't anymore, Senior Street also, this would sort of box that and put meters on the Bartlett Street side. On the residential parking permits, the, let's call them the nubs at the bottom of Delevan and Sanford Street that go from Jersey Avenue to the railroad tracks, the rest of Sanford and Delevan are already permit parking, and with the school coming in, we didn't want that to create additional potential parking issues in the neighborhood, the school should be adequately parked because they didn't have a parking variance when they came into the board and were approved, but there are also other visitors and whatnot that might try to take advantage of that area, and that area already suffers from many commercial vehicles and whatnot that park there and take advantage of the neighborhood, the idea here being to just sort of nip that all in the bud and get rid of that and make sure that the school, under any circumstances, does not create any spillover trouble for those two blocks.
Actually, are you, or I hear you saying, cool, are you talking about the new school?
Yes.
For Jersey Avenue?
Right, these are the two streets right after.
Due to where, even though I don't see how, I already see that it's going to be a big issue already, due to where the streets are very small, no parking, due to where I don't see how parents are really going to be, what, blocking traffic to pick up their children, due to where I just spoke with Kent County on this at the last meeting, due to where he gave me the orders that I had to speak at the traffic meeting, due to where, it depends on that, but due to where I find this to be a very hard issue, as skinny as Jersey Avenue is, and like I said, nowhere to park, it's going to create a big issue due to where with parents picking up their kids there, so we'll just see how that is, but my point is, I'm, I'm just saying, due to where, you keep putting all these signs up, signs up regarding, that's in certain areas, what, wow, like I said, due to where you have many people who do not respect these signs, and like I say, please, what, is someone going to take action, due to where, what, where people's not respecting, what, what you're paying for to keep putting signs up, ooh, no standing, no stopping, what, what, is violation to people?
Usually, if there's a parking, you don't have, if there's residential parking permit, and you don't have a permit, you usually get ticketed.
Well, not even.
Hopefully, that's enforced, and that's what we're doing, this is one that is specific, it's for that side of the street that Dominguez spoke about, so hopefully that also will alleviate any challenges for those residents that are there, even though.
I understand with the residential, but I was talking about the other one, due to where stopping, standing, due to where, for example, I'll take and tell you an example, due to where on George Street where the police put the sign up saying, ooh, no stopping, no standing, due to where people continue to do it, that's my point, due to where people aren't respecting your signs, and I think action needs to be taken care of, due to where, what?
Thank you, Ms. Daniel, and like I said, this is specific to that area, but thank you for your point.
Well, like I said, I hope to see, like I said, something being done, because, what, signs don't mean anything in New Brunswick now, due to where, like I said, it's like even do whatever you want now.
Thank you. Anybody else who gives specific ordinance?
Move the ordinance, second.
Councilmember Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Castaneda.
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming.
Yes.
Councilmember Gaskin.
Yes.
Councilmember Secor Ludwig.
Yes.
Council vice president Egan.
Yes.
Council president Escobar.
Yes. Number three an ordinance to amend and supplement the revised general ordinances of the city of New Brunswick, title twelve, street side example of places, chapter twelve point twenty-eight, parks and playground, we're going to add new section, in reference to dog parks. Any comment from my council members, my fellow members, comments on that? Any member of the public who wishes to address the council on these specific ordinance, please?
Once again, I, I will smile about this one, even though I'm not happy with it, but that was where I gave a surprise to Mr. Relently and his crew, due to where, like, wow, that was the day of the shooting on Lee Avenue, due to where, where I met all of them before there, I knew nothing about the meeting, but how I met them down there, it was a funny thing, like, wow, what are you doing here, how did you know about the meeting? But my, my point is where, due to where I, I'm happy to see what I've been asking has been done, due, for the past two years, and maybe, Mr. Anderson, please, why don't you take a ride down there, due to where you were covering up every time I said, ooh, what works need to be done down, down to the park? I, I'm speaking on, I'm speaking on the ordinance, please, and I will get to it, because the only reason why it got done, with the trimming and all, due to where how beautiful it was looking with the workers, how they really cut and trimmed everything down there, nothing that the public wasn't doing, they've been busting their behinds for the past two weeks, the only reason why it got done, that was because of the ordinance with the, with the dog park, so thank you, I'm commenting on, on this, and like I said, I'm speaking for the workers, due to where how beautiful, wow, how the park is, you see more people coming down now, I give it to the workers, please, why don't you take, I go down there at least twice a day, how beautiful, beautiful it is, why don't you take a ride down there and see the difference, how the, the workers had busted their behinds cleaning up down there? But yes, as far as where, I also was told, due to where, that it would be cameras put on this, will you tell me how ma, I, I didn't get the number of, how many cameras, where the cameras would be located, would somebody be able to tell me?
Ms. full work, there's any cameras attached to this?
As of right now, we're looking at least one camera at the dog park.
Thank you.
Well, I heard beside just at the dog park, due to where since with the, from Mr. Sal, due to where since the workers were cleaning all up, due to where, what, it was supposed to be more cameras put to watch people, so they wouldn't be dumping their garbage, leaving their garbage down there, so I'm hearing two different stories now, due to where, for the, just for the dog park, and due to where with people cleaning up after themselves.
At this time, since we're talking about the dog parks, at this time, only one camera for the dog park, so that's what you refer.
Well, like I said, I, I, I am speaking on, like I said, I was down there with all of them, and I'm, like I said, talking with all of them at the meeting, and like I said, the purpose for the cleanup was for the dog park, I wish you would stop making it look like I'm changing it to, to something else, due to where, the only reason why, like I said, certain things were done down there is for this dog park, but the other thing I'm going to say, please, and due to where more cameras, due to where, I hope the worker, it just doesn't leave, the workers were having cleaning up dog crap after people who don't clean up after their, their dogs, due to where that's happening at too many other parks, due to where, I tell the workers, please, don't be scared, take the pictures, give them to me, I, I will put it up, due to where watching them picking up dog crap at so many other locations, so like I said, it was supposed to be more than one camera, and like I said, due to where, come on, a lot of people don't clean, clean up after themselves, and there's a new law going in effect, due to where, have you seen it on the news, to take away the doggy bags, due to where now it's supposed to go to plat, paper, paper, and how a lot of people saying, ooh, I'm not using that to clean up after my dog, if you've seen it on the news, due to where, just like they took away the grocery bags, how they're supposed to be taking the bags away for the dog poop as well, so like I said, please, one more, I, I heard more than one camera, and like I said, I'm talking, speaking up for the workers, due to where they're busting their behinds already, and they don't need to be cleaning up dog crap after all of these people that will be coming down there, so please, I'm speaking on the workers, I'm not happy with the dog, dog park, but like I said, I'm glad to see that the park was finally cleaned up, thank you to the workers.
Thank you, Ms. Daniel, again, it starts on the dog park, we're just talking about with one camera, if there's other cameras that are planted, it's not covered in this park at this time. And we have ordinances of, the public comment section has been closed, the ordinance.
Second.
Councilmember Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Castaneda.
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming.
Yes.
Councilmember Gaskin.
Yes.
Councilmember Secor Ludwig.
Yes.
Council vice president Egan.
Yes.
Council president Escobar.
Yes. We have ordinances of first reading, number one is an ordinance to amend and supplement the revised general ordinances of the city of New Brunswick, title three, revenue and fines, in schedule section two twenty-one ten, this is in reference to police department fees.
Move the ordinance setting down April nineteenth, twenty twenty-three, same date to be advertised.
Second. Councilmember Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Castaneda.
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming.
Yes.
Councilmember Gaskin.
Yes.
Councilmember Secor Ludwig.
Yes.
Council vice president Egan.
Yes.
Council president Escobar.
Yes. Number two an ordinance to amend and supplement the revised general ordinances of the city of New Brunswick, title ten vehicles and traffic, handicap parkings, schedule thirty-nine parking songs for handicapped persons, this is to add one at thirty-five Old School Bar.
Move the ordinance setting down Wednesday, until nineteenth, twenty twenty-three, same date to be advertised.
Second. Councilmember Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Castaneda.
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming.
Yes.
Councilmember Gaskin.
Yes.
Councilmember Secor Ludwig.
Yes.
Council vice president Egan.
Yes.
Council president Escobar.
Yes. We have number three an ordinance to amend and supplement the revised general ordinances of the city of New Brunswick, title ten vehicles and traffic, chapter ten point twelve, traffic control regulations, we are loading schedule eight, loading songs, we're going to add to downtown street.
I move the ordinance setting down April nineteenth, twenty twenty-three, at five thirty P M, to be advertised.
Councilmember Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Castaneda.
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming.
Yes.
Councilmember Gaskin.
Yes.
Councilmember Secor Ludwig.
Yes.
Council vice president Egan.
Yes.
Council president Escobar.
Yes. Number four an ordinance to see that municipal bond and appropriation limits and establish a cap bank.
Move the ordinance setting down April nineteenth, twenty twenty-three, at five thirty, same date to be advertised.
Second. Councilmember Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Castaneda.
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming.
Yes.
Councilmember Gaskin.
Yes.
Councilmember Secor Ludwig.
Yes.
Council vice president Egan.
Yes.
Council president Escobar.
Yes. Number five an ordinance to amend and supplement the revised general ordinances of the city of New Brunswick, title three, revenue and fines, in schedule, this is in reference to amend recreation fees, lack football.
I move the ordinance setting down April nineteenth, twenty twenty-three, at five thirty P M, same date to be advertised.
Second. Councilmember Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Castaneda.
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming.
Yes.
Councilmember Gaskin.
Yes.
Councilmember Secor Ludwig.
Yes.
Council vice president Egan.
Yes.
Council president Escobar.
Yes, and number six, six, an ordinance to amend and supplement the revised general ordinances of the city of New Brunswick, title fifteen, illness and obstruction, this is to add chapter fifteen point eight zero, lead-based paint inspections.
I move the ordinance setting down April nineteenth, twenty twenty-three, at five thirty P M, same date to be advertised.
Second. Councilmember Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Castaneda.
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming.
Yes.
Councilmember Gaskin.
Yes.
Councilmember Secor Ludwig.
Yes.
Council vice president Egan.
Yes.
Council president Escobar.
Yes. At this time, we're going to the resolutions, we have resolutions one to forty-three, if any of my fellow council members have any questions or comments on the resolutions. At this time, we are preparing to open the reading, to public comment, the resolutions only, have up to five minutes per person, one time off, any members of the public wishes to speak on the resolutions only, please approach the councils, if you may.
Charlie Cradaville, Sedam Street, New Brunswick, wanted to ask about number four, this is another five thousand dollars to a law firm representing the city in lawsuit, can you tell me the? Can you tell me the nature of the lawsuit?
Mr. Chummy?
Yes, this was an over-suit by this individual, excuse me, the plaintiff sued the city, lost in trial, court took it to the appellate division, lost again to the appellate division. And now I understand is seeking certification to the New Jersey Supreme Court. This resolution just pays the outstanding bill for the current law firm that's handling our bail.
Thank you.
Thank you. May I ask what kind of records are at stake there?
I can't give you all the details, I'll look it up.
Okay, I'll look it up. Number 21 and 22 are both amendments to the zoning ordinance. And I'd like to understand what prompted these and what changes are proposed.
So for the zoning ordinance, we're looking at number 21, we're looking to make adjustments to sign regulations down down, particularly regarding projected signs, to allow them to be a little bigger under certain circumstances and not allow them to be cloth banner style anymore because they, they trade poorly and becomes a nuisance after a while. To waive the need for loading zones, not loading zones, loading docks on site between Albany and Liberty, specifically just on Lower Street, to not screw up the front edges there. If you have a property that's going to develop something, it's going to be on the corner and you have a side street, you will be required to have a loading on the side street entrance. But not on the street, but on your property, but coming in from either Patterson or Church or Liberty type thing. Then we're also increasing the permitting fees regarding the next one, which is regarding Land Use Code Title 16, include exempt relatively small and mid-sized projects in the downtown from necessary site plan approval. We will reduce the number of paper plans that are going to be required to be submitted besides saving some trees. It's also really uncool to get that many paper plans every time somebody submits for an application. And we're also looking to upward increase the fees for variances and the like for the board for applications.
Thank you, Mr. Dominguez.
Thank you. On the municipal budget, number 26, I'd like to understand Samuel Klein and Company, the role that they play for the city and how they got to be in that role?
Mr. police, if you'd like to know mine.
Samuel Klein is our auditor and they go through a regular RFP process like all of our professionals do.
All right, and are they the same company, the same firm that was doing the auditing for the MCM JIF?
Do you have that?
I'm sorry, for the who?
The JIF.
Are they, I don't, no, they're not doing the audit for the JIF.
Right, but were they not just a year or two ago, the auditor for the JIF?
At some point, they may be the auditor for JIF, but they're not currently.
Okay. If I recall correctly, the JIF changed auditors after some pretty serious problems, including late audits and, you know, the state takeover of the agency. So I'm just concerned why, you know, the city has the same auditor. Can anybody?
I'm not sure if Mr. Cradaville's difference is, there's no state payor of that agency. But if they are under public purchasing rules and they go through an RFP, the JIF, like everyone else does, but probably better question asked at a JIF meeting.
Okay, well, I will probably see you at the next JIF meeting, I guess. You know, my understanding is that the JIF is under the supervision of the Department of Banking and Insurance, is that correct?
Oh, it's incredible. Continue to be working, you're talking about the auditors that we have in the city, so what is your point? You're making a point, making you that you want to say, you're making a point that this company might be, you're like answering that this is not, this is a, they're not doing it right now, as I know, you know. So you're expressing concern, so let's just do that.
Yeah, absolutely, and I was just trying to clarify, since the city administrator corrected me.
But let's have a little conversation that you can have with one of them.
Okay, can you tell me, is there a representative of Samuel Klein and Company here who could address these questions?
I don't have anybody in this.
Nobody, okay. I think it's worth looking into because the JIF is going through some very serious problems and, you know, at least some of the board members seem to be dissatisfied with the services of Samuel Klein previously.
Thank you, Mr. Chaddy.
I have more to talk about, but I'll bring it up later.
Anybody else from the public wishes to address the council on the resolutions only?
Yes, I will start with 36, with body, with body cameras, due to where the city put the tell you, due to where I was just in office to request, due to where I see that New Brunswick, the Police Department is not cooperating with body cameras. I just requested, due to where I want to see the body cameras from March 17th, due to where I want to see the body cameras from March 26th. Now, please tell me, is it the officer's choice to turn the body camera on on the scene or not, or is it that they have to have the body camera on?
Mr. Daniel, will you answer that question when it's time to record the question?
This is related to, why do you think it still relates to body cameras, due to where the equipment?
Allow me to finish, I allow you to talk, so let's have this conversation.
I don't need you to waste my time with keep interrupting me.
We're going to answer that one at this time, okay? That's not, it has nothing to do with the resolution, go ahead.
It says body camera recording equipment, so why doesn't have, that doesn't have anything to do with resolution?
The cameras and the sensors are two different things, go ahead, Mr. Daniel.
Wow, I see why, I'm just standing in front of a people who work for the devil in here, due to where, wow, you don't want to do the right thing.
You can answer that at the recording.
Oh, yes, I will, believe me, you will, and then due to where, I forget the lieutenant's name, I know it starts with an AH, that sitting factor, is it Hoover or Hunter, please forgive me, what is your, Hoover?
Do you need to address?
Well, I, I will, but I have to know what his name was, okay? Just by respect, okay? I wish you would just stop doing that, please. Please, I would make a point out, the reason why I want to say to the issue, due to where, like I said, so we don't go through the same thing, due to where, what, for Joyce Comer Park, and please make it part to him, due to where it says to take AM to 8:00 p.m. and they're not allowed to stay in the park after 11, 10 o'clock, 11 o'clock?
Mr. Daniel, can you confirm to what resolution you're talking about?
That's number nine, due to where, due to where the last time, the issue after what I'm getting, I getting a parking ticket, a ticket for being in park after hours, and I told you that was where he said, ooh, it was up to you guys that they stay in the park up until 10, 11 o'clock. Now, would you please make it clear, due to where it said that the people are supposed to be out of the parks after 8:00 p.m.? Now, please do make that clear to Lieutenant Hoover, due to where, like I said, come on, don't issue no ticket for me being out after hours, and he said, well, I have it on recording from the last time, and I said, where you council members, oh, we have nothing to do with that. Now, it's either one of you that has something to do with it, due to where it says on the ordinance, like I said, do what you're here supposed to do, the right thing, like I said, stop making excuses. And like I said, we will get to the solution, why I'm very upset with you council members and the Police Department.
Thank you, Mr. Daniel. Just for the record, the resolution that Mr. Daniel is referring to, number nine, is just to allow a festival at Joyce Comer Park.
But like I said, due to where, yes, they're to be out of the park at 8:00 p.m. due to where, what, last year, what, like I said, what, what, he let them stay until 10, 11 o'clock? But wow, I get a, I get a ticket for being in park after hours for calling an ambulance for somebody? Like I said, do the right thing. And then I know it was one more, if I don't, if the time goes off, then that's, that's okay, I know those are the main two. And then also 19, would you please tell me, due to where this was like for the lawn care, was this part of with Boy Park getting redone?
19 is, you said the 19.
That's application for all parks citywide, that's citywide, all parks.
Okay, well, due to where I didn't see a price, what, like I said, for what the Dog Park was and seeing this, thinking that it was that, due to where, okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Daniel. Any other representative of the public wishes to address the council on resolutions only? Have you helped?
Move the resolutions.
Second.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Castaneda?
Yes, with the exception of 23 where I've stated.
Duly noted. Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Gaskin?
Yes.
Councilmember Sikora Ludwig?
Yes.
Council Vice President Egan?
Yes.
Council President Escobar?
Yes.
So at this time, we're getting ready to open up the public portion part of the meeting. Before we do that, I just want to give you statements. First, I would like to congratulate Mr. Alexi, Alexi Flores, Director of our Work Department, for being recognized by the American Home Works Association. In previous meetings, we have some inquiry about the New Brunswick Historical Association. It is my understanding that they met last month, in March, and public participation was felt proportionally. Also, at the last meeting, I was asked, that we held, I was asked to provide a statement about an incident involving a report regarding a intoxicated police officer, and as it is the norm of the council, we do not comment on personal matters. In this case, the incident was reported as part of the Internal Affairs and Disciplined Report for the year 2022. This report was done in accordance with the guidance that requires law enforcement agencies to submit to the Attorney Generals and the Chemical Prosecutor and publish on the EDC's website a brief synopsis of all complaint where termination, reduction of rank, or grade of more than five days assessed to an agency member. According to the report, the officer, while off duty, was found to be intoxicated and exhibited conduct on becoming a public employee. The officer was involved, the officer involved was suspended for six days, therefore he was accountable, he was held accountable for his actions. I believe that it's important for public employees and public servants who hold possessions of trust and responsibility in the community to behave in a professional and respectful manner, both in their official capacities and in their personal lives. Being intoxicated in public can lead to a loss of trust and credibility in the eyes of the public, which in turn can damage the reputation of the individual and/or the organization of the agency that they represent. Therefore, as public servants, it is imperative to remember that our actions reflect not only on ourselves, but also who we represent and the community we serve. As such, we should make every effort to maintain a professional, responsible image at all times, both on and off duty. Also, I just want to make sure that we have a couple of activities for the community this weekend. There's an egg venture this Saturday for the children, April 8th, at the New Sports Complex at 10:00 a.m. and at the yard at Rockers at 11:00 a.m. At this time, we're getting ready to have the public, we're preparing the meeting to open for public comment. You have up to five minutes per person, one time up. And any member of the public who wishes to speak to the council, please come up. And before we do that, Deputy Director Miller, are you here? Yes, you are. Can you just clarify, they use, you know, when officers, the officers body cameras, what is our protocol in terms of the officers and the cameras?
The New Jersey Attorney General has promulgated directives that describe when a body camera can and cannot be turned on and used. The directives are long and there are a host of parameters that describe when and when not to use the camera. You can go on the website and read the whole directive, I do not have it memorized and I would not want to say something incorrectly. So go on the New Jersey Attorney General website, you can see the whole directive that describes how to operate the cameras, and our officers have been trained in those directives and they follow those directives.
Thank you so much. The other assertion that was made as Joyce Comer Park, that we give, you know, just the hours that the parks, the city parks are open are from?
Parks are open from dawn to dusk, however, there are ordinance that allow for festivals and the times are changed for those ordinances, according to what the festival dictates.
The hours are muted, absolutely, thank you. At this time, any member of the public wishes to address the council, you have five minutes, they come up, and you can make a comment. Just to remind you, we ask you that, please give us your name, and you have five minutes?
Well, you can do me a favor, give those to Mr. Egan, due to where, maybe I tell the public, since it's no problem with putting bear out, tell the public to put him in front of his house. I have to say, I'm very dis- disappointed, due to where, like I said, I'm getting tired of racism between this council members, like I said, I'm just looking at a group of people who work with the devil, and the same thing with New Brunswick Police Department, due to where I didn't put it up on Facebook, I said, say prayers for the two teenagers that got stabbed down there on George Street, where one of them was my son and his friend by a group of Latino boys, due to where, what, yes, my son was scared to speak up at the time, give him time, when you're a victim, you're scared to speak up. But like I said, what, now I'm hearing, if there's going to be an arrest, if there's going to be a charge, please, like I said, what happened to you, do the damn crime, you do the time, you do crime, you do the fine, please, I'm getting, I'm getting very fed up and I'm going to, I have plenty of business on my side, I'm taking this to the news matter with the racism with New Brunswick Police Department, but like I said, and that's why I requested the body cameras for the 17th. But one thing I will not forgot, forget, I'm going to speak on two officers, speaking from my heart. One's standing right here, that's Officer Jamal James, due to where he works in the Board of Education. Like I said, my son has been telling me, due to where, like I said, he makes me scared to speak for me, how he's been an officer and a second parent. I'm speaking from my heart, thanking you for really trying to speak to my son, due to where, like I said, some people don't know when you're a victim, it's very scared, and God bless, the Lord will send you a blessing. The other officer that I will say, after running, I ran down there, all the way from Handy and Livingston Avenue, I got there quicker than a car. The other officer, I, that only really helped me out, others ignored me, I will say thank you to Officer Nicole Lewis, where sees the officer that drives the blue detective's car, wow, thanking her, God bless her, putting her officer in the hands of a parent, wow, giving me water, putting me in the police car, rushing me up to the hospital to get to my son immediately, even though by the time I got up there, due to where, what, I had almost collapsed with throwing up and from running so, so, so fast. I want to thank those two people, but like I said, I'm getting tired of, wow, racism, please. And like I said, I'm not against Latinos, did I just put a video up there with, on Facebook, but showing New Brunswick Police Department, what, a man and a woman busting the window on French in Handy, then the man comes out after he got cut with the glass from when they busted his window, they assaulted the man right there, wow, and called the police, it's all on video, what, New Brunswick Police Department arrives, ooh, was he black? What, please, crime comes in every race, stop thinking that all matter is dealt on black and I'm getting sick of it, due to where, like I asked you, please, what is it with illegal, illegal, being arrested, you never answered, what, does it take one of you to be a victim to really take someone serious, or being, being what, hurt, beat up or whatever? What, the police that showed them the video of the whole incident on Facebook, what, they let them walk away? Please. What, what, the owner of Sam's Chicken just got assaulted, what, 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 beat up, what, New Brunswick Police Department, what, let them walk away? Please. Come on, like I said, stop going by damn color of the skin and go by the law, New Brunswick would be a better place. Like I said, what, and then like I said, someone said, ooh, why are you always there at the right time? I was just walking, running my business, coming back through later on, due to where they never arrested the woman, what, there she goes, and I got the video up there, breaking the window, breaking windows again. What, the Lord works with me to prove a point to you guys, due to where, what, I shouldn't even have to be going through this, you're supposed to be here for the community, making this police officer, the Police Department do the right thing. You see the comments on there, I'm not the only one speaking about New Brunswick Police Department. Come on, please, like I said, does it take one of you to be a victim, like I said, come on, now I'm wondering, due to where it's scared, which way to go, due to where, wow, five kids, what, is one going to be press charged, due to every time I call the detective? what, is one going to be press charged, due to every time I call the detective, oh, he's not here, he's not here. Please, I know what it's like to be a witness, due to where, what, I was witness of the girl getting hit on 27, not knowing, wow, my information would go to her, where, wow, she sends me threats, ooh, bet you been on your business, sending me threats, due to where, what, protection of the time. Like I said, does it take one of you to be a victim to understand and get police department to do their damn job?
Anybody else wish to address it?
Yes, good evening, council and members of the city board. My name is Mr. Duran Boatman. Come on, come on, come on, come on.
You will have your day.
Have you just, you'd like to make a question?
Yeah, sure. Yeah, I would like to speak to the council and the city board. My birth certificate says Middlesex General Hospital, New Brunswick, New Jersey, May 1st, 1961. Yes, 62 years old, and that's 33 days. I've been to 32 states. I moved here for a personal, and I changed two bucks to course papers down those, down those Memorial House, by which way I was born and raised. I'll just simply say it like this. We're, we're in trouble at times, but China, and you better believe, you're going to need your slaves. And if reparations isn't made at a representative time, there's going to be a lot of problems. You need to take Colonel Nelson down auctioning all slaves at the slave trading post. You don't know that's Colonel Nelson auctioning all slaves based on the Constitution. It needs to be removed. Understand what we're talking about here. You're honoring a man who auctioned all slaves, like there's something to honor him for. And everybody of color in here should feel that. Go read it, define print, Colonel Nelson.
Sir, if you could just address myself.
I'm addressing the whole form, this is not just, you're not the only person here. Ma'am, listen to me very carefully, I will say this to you again. I went to school, my father worked for Senator Mayor John Lynch. You're not understanding, I have over 10,000 people who bleed the same blood as me in this city alone. Over 10,000, we have not been displaced. We're still here, as you can see around here. And all we want is equality in justice, we're tired, like she said, of being discriminated and oppressed, and that's what that statute represents, discrimination and oppression, continuing oppression for the people who cultivate this land and made it possible for this to be what it is today. But you can keep in mind, China and the entire Middle East and Russia are coming to take this back, and you got to know that they will. But that nuclear, because the North Koreans can, when they send off that, there's nothing we can do to stop it from coming. It's a matter of time, let's come together as a people. Listen, Tushor says blacks can't be white and whites can't be black, but we're all the same underneath. My great-grandfather's name is Sanford Boatman, who escaped the Holocaust. Yeah, he's Jewish, from Boston institutions, but there's not a bit of racism and prejudice in my bones, but I do understand the core racism and prejudice. There are only three kinds of seeds, Asiatic, Asian, and Caucasian, and some cannot reproduce outside themselves, these are facts. You do understand where I'm coming from, right? Let's keep the one hundred, for this, you know, Prince Harry and his mother, Princess Diane, because she chose to engage with, you know, the Saudi, you know, you know the God, a man of conquest, they murdered her and him, but the shogun survived. How you think, how you feel about that? And his family dismisses her because she's not one of us. This thing has to stop, man. Because if we don't stop and come together as a nation, you can't stop China rushing the entire Middle East. It's impossible. I just got finished watching CNN news, China has 450 ships in the ocean right now, compared to our 249. They've been around for 5,000 years as a country, I say people, compared to our minimum, less than 300 years, and you want to challenge China? You know, Genghis Khan, the greatest warrior of all, listen, I come to chop a message on you people, man, because I'm, I'm an American, well, I'm, listen, I live in Midwest with them, they call, you call them Native Americans, they will take your, I was in prison with them in Minnesota, they don't play that, they're the natives of this land, it's their land. And if you go to the Midwest and call them Indians, from Indians, you don't know what I'm talking about, they just remind you of Indians. I won't spend a lot of time on this, but truly, you understand, we need to start somewhere, and if we don't come together, it's going to be too late for everybody. And, because we never experienced war upon our land. That's coming, as severe as China rushing the entire Middle East, they want to bring here. Our army is just not vast enough. Our experience, Taiwan, so, you know, Biden says we're going to protect that, but some of the people said, no, we're not. We're not ready for China and their consciences and their allies. Think about what I'm saying, man, put this on your mind and your heart. If we don't come together and make some type of change in this country that gets rid of the Constitution that says the slave is still one fifth of human being and less than an animal in the barn. You got to be, in San Francisco, they're starting to pay reparations, you know that, right? To their slaves, just simple things. A floor must go up and a floor must down. But in the prison system, 2.5 million people in this country, in this prison system, 65 African-Americans, 18 to 25 years old, these things have to stop. And again, I come in peace, a man of God.
Thank you, time to stop, thank you for that.
And I'll be back. I come humble and patiently before you. But I'm going to seek the Lord of all things, each night shout out my King's slayed. The original term. And when you spell, all the books they created, and I've read seven of them, read his books, you spell God backwards, and you ask yourself, who gives the Creator a name and create him with a dog?
Thank you, sir.
Done. Who gives the Creator a name and creates him with a dog? What? Back. He's maybe coming to visit in 1815, 1592, so it couldn't have been Peter. And you couldn't have walked in there because it would have been burnt up in the sun.
Thank you, sir.
Alexa Harris, Saraville. I'm here to raise some awareness on a couple of issues. I've spoken previously about the intersection of Jones and Sedan Street, and that that is a huge hotspot for vehicle accidents. I'm once again asking for not just a research study to be done, but for actually something to be done, I propose a possibility stop sign. There are still remnants of a car on the street, headlight and pieces of the car body from the most recent accident that was like two or three weeks ago. And just the other day, yesterday, actually, there was almost another car accident. So I don't want us to wait, like, morbidly for someone to get injured or die at this intersection, for us to take concerns seriously, so please, again, please do something about this hotspot of a car accident. Also, I wanted to address the spending for the police department. I just wanted to raise the question, how much temporary housing or housing in general could be provided with that money that's been spent on the software, on the extra duty, or even like creation of a crisis assistance team of unarmed civilians, or a non-911 emergency mental health crisis hotline for city residents to call, the list goes on. Also, wanted to raise the issue of summer emergency shelter program, Code Red or whatever you want to call it. Many people have spoken about issues with Code Blue, the abuse of clients, and also, it's been raised that there's concern for shelter in the summer when it's super hot. At the moment, I am not aware of anything, any kind of programs shelters providing shelters for the summer months, so I just wanted to ask that, are there any plans, starting with this year, for that to happen?
I have to answer at, at the next meeting, I don't have a question to answer at this time.
Okay. Now, on to Earth Day Month. At the beginning, President Escobar has made a comment on, on the commemoration of Earth Day Month, but I just wanted to ask, what is the city actually doing? I am cynical of all government bodies, including my hometown, of what we're actually doing. But one thing to address is that the council hasn't put to a vote about the Borgenish Power Plan, despite the Environmental Commission has, has counseled you to vote against the power plant. Understand that you are not the decision makers, but your influence holds a lot of, a lot of space, and that's why a lot of, a lot of government bodies have signed on to the resolution against the gas power plant. Why are we on like a public health concern, like, why are we adding more pollutants to the air, right? The air doesn't just sit there, it moves around. If it doesn't affect New Brunswick, then it's going to affect our neighbors. And then also, gas power plant, why are we increasing the reliance on fossil fuels? Also, wanted to bring attention to the $5 a month option for VO's electric scooters, that's called the VO's Access Pricing Program for low-income riders. It's a case-by-case application, but I can't apply for this because even though, like, I want to ride the scooters, right, I'm low income, I get health grants, I get work, study, list goes on and on, right? But I can't apply because the city hasn't opted into this program, the city has to opt in. There's about a little over 20 cities across the state, the country that have opted in, including Newark, New Jersey, New York City, and other places. This is something that I brought to attention of Mayor Cahill at the quote-unquote Town Hall that he had at Rutgers University in December, he said he didn't know about it, I made aware of this. I haven't been able to opt in since the month of December, so I do urge for the city to take in consideration that the scooters are very expensive, riding it for an hour comes up to about $17. The rent, rent a bike, a bike through the university is $25 a semester, a semester. So the scooters are very expensive, riding over here from Douglas Campus, right, that was like 10 minutes, that cost me like $5. Now I have to, potentially, if I ride back, right, and anything, whatever. $5 a month for low-income riders, for both students and residents of New Brunswick, who make, you know, sustainable transportation a lot more accessible. I also wanted to bring attention about the IPC, IPCC report that came out in March, which is the UN, which is the UN Intergovernmental Panel on Climate Change, IPCC. It found that the world is likely to surpass its most ambitious climate target, limiting warming to 1.5 degrees Celsius or 2.7 degrees Fahrenheit above pre-industrial temperatures by early 2030s. Unless we adopt environmental policies of both 1130 and place, we're, we're in a climate crisis, so I just wanted to see more action. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wishes to address, make any comments to the council?
Yes. Hello, my name is Elijah Bennett, lifelong New Brunswick resident, something came to my attention about a week ago. I don't want to do this, but I'm going to do it anyway. My wife is a, is a city hall employee, and she was harassed by somebody with a video camera in her office, and I don't take kindly to that, and I think that you guys should do, put some measures in, where people cannot videotape people while they're at work, because it was a black woman being videotaped, and the person went into other offices with Caucasian women, and they were not on camera. He actually said my wife's name on the video, which is very, very dangerous in this day and time when you have cronies that do whatever you say do, and they know where she works, they know what she looks like now, so they deem her to be rude or disrespectful and any type, anything like that, they could come up here and do something to her. If that happens, I'm in protect mode, and I will protect what's mine. I'm done.
Anybody else wishes to address the council?
Yes, hello, April Nicklaus, 143 Sedan Street, I have a couple of matters that I would like to address. One is that at several of the recent meetings, we've heard many different people raise issues about housing affordability, homelessness in the city, brought up a number of different concerns. One specific one was the need to address the rent control ordinance that the city has, the primary issue being that the maximum allowable increase per year is 5.5%, which is very high, and the request is to lower that to 3%, which is more reasonable. What I would like to ask the council is, is the council currently considering revisiting the rent control ordinance to make that change?
We'll be working with the city officials, we're working on, coming up with a plan, so I'll try to have an update by the next meeting.
Okay. I look forward to that update. And then I do appreciate that you started the meeting with a recognition of Earth Day, I think that's very nice. I would like to know more specifically what the city is doing to prioritize the environment in acting on climate change.
I'll get to that information.
Okay. And do you know if the city of New Brunswick has a climate action plan, or one in development?
I will get to that answer, I'll put it in right here.
Thank you.
Good evening, council members, President Escobar. My name is Janelle Poku, I'm at 75 Redmond Street here in New Brunswick, I'm here again. I've been coming to the council meetings since about 2019, on behalf of our condo association, Douglas Estates Condom and Menure Association North, because we've had consistent issues with the panhandlers, drug addicts, as well as unhoused, that have taken over the corner of Paul Robeson and George Street. So I just wanted to remind the council of some of the issues and ensure that this information is on record, that we've continued to have throughout the last few years. We maintain communication with your department, as well as the mayor's office, in references to these issues. We continuously contact the police department, which we have been advised to do multiple times, but unfortunately, that hasn't been a consistent, that practice hasn't consistently helped our issue, the issue has actually gotten worse over the past few years. Some of the issues that we have had on our property include individuals using drugs on our property, shooting up, etc. We have brought pictures to the council meetings regarding that. They now use the bathroom on our property, both ways, to be as unfrank as possible. Additionally, they sleep on the property, recently, they were found sleeping on the front stoop of somebody's house, so not even in the back anymore, they're bringing all of their items and sleeping on the front steps of individuals' units, which has become very stressful for the families and individuals who are owners and renters in the area. Additionally, we just don't feel safe. As tax-paying and longstanding citizens here in the city, we do not feel safe. My husband and I came in late one night, we were accosted by somebody who came into the parking lot to address us, to ask us for money, we felt very uncomfortable. So at this time, we're just trying to see what the city is really going to do in order to better support us as residents here in New Brunswick. Individuals who live over there, who own over there, have been over there, some of them for more than 25 years, I myself have been there for nearly 15, I came to the city because it was close to Rutgers, my, my previous job, and I enjoyed being here, but unfortunately, the quality of life has continued to decline in that particular area. So a couple of things that I wanted to ask, and you can point me in the right direction in terms of this, since no sustainable relief has really been provided to us, we're requesting the following. On the corner of Paul Robeson and George Street, we would like to have a six-foot slate fence that's gated in that area in order to help individuals or to prevent individuals from not coming onto the property. Additionally, we would like the no longer grass area, because the individuals walk along the grass area to panhandle, we would like that replaced with some type of brick or paving, similar to what you might see in a downtown area, where it's actually a little bit better policed as well during the summer months, where this is an issue. So we would like that replaced, because we have been paying to, we paid to put, to do some lawn maintenance there, we replanted grass, it was gone because they do walk back and forth on that area. Additionally, we pay for trash pickup twice a month, because they leave so much garbage on the property, so we're looking for a trash can also to be placed on the corner of Paul Robeson and George, so they can put their trash there, because again, we all know, we can't stop the panhandlers, this is, they're so-called legal, right? So to panhandle on that, in that particular area, though I disagree with that, we would like to have some help from the city. So again, a six-foot slate fence, a trash can on the corner, we would also like to have a camera placed on the corner of George and Paul Robeson, because there has been continued and increased drug sale activity there as well, which I have also seen, and especially with the houses directly across the street, near the Exxon, they hang out there, and they purchase drugs and use them there as well. So I believe those are the requests that I have, and I'm just trying to determine which city department can actually help me with this issue, because we keep talking and nothing has been done. So if I could be directed in that particular direction, I would appreciate that.
What I'm going to do, I just for the record, in the spirit of transparency, I live, that's where I live, that's my area, and all this statement that Mr. Noh has said are true, we have been going in, we have addressed, you know, we have tried to address these challenges before. Mr. Julius, if you could just, please, make sure that, just tell, I have also that information, give me the information directly, so I can pass it on to her, and we can follow up on this, so I'll take it personally, too.
Thank you, and I don't want to bother you as a neighbor, but I would like these issues, yes.
And just also, just so you know, I know that the police have increased their patrolling.
Yeah, so let me say, I'm sorry, my kindness, but I do want to say positively, I spoke with Captain Bolivia, and he and officers have, they do go out, they have been responsive, but there are only so many officers and only so many hours a day, like we get that. So, but they have been responsive, individuals have been responding to our emails at this time, so there has been some response, but it still hasn't relieved the issue.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Anybody else wishes to address the council?
Good evening, my name is Owen, I live in 100 Montgomery Street. I first came to speak at the city council around the start of the Code Blue shelter season, you'll probably remember me. After volunteers were prohibited from continuing to advocate there, some of us started attending some of us started attending and volunteering at the Interfaith Rotating Shelter, which some of you may be familiar with. This is a valiant effort of a few volunteers on a shoe sting budget of about $2,000, trying to house the houseless community in the coldest months of winter. Through this volunteering effort and conversations, we learned more about the city's continued failure to address the housing and houses crisis in New Brunswick that's been ongoing for decades. We're just beginning our research and our coalition is just getting started at pushing you, the city, to take real action. That being said, in the meantime, the men who are in the shelter are now no longer have the same resources that they once had. The weather can still be cold, rain, and then the coming heat of the summer. The demands that we hear from these folks and from other advocates is that we need more garbage cans around the city. This is something the city that can do to help this issue. And also to treat the sanitation workers well, to pay them well and to treat them with respect for the work that they do. Also, the city needs more public restrooms. People who are houseless have not, do not have the access to restrooms that we have. There are not available restrooms for people to take care of themselves. At the dignity center in the city, there also needs to be more showers. Finally, someone informed us that last week during the tornado warning, many of these houseless homes had nowhere to go. There needs to be an emergency shelter that is available for emergencies like this. These are the demands I'm bringing forward from the community to now and will continue to push for you to act on improving the city's policy towards housing.
Thank you, and thank you. Thank you, and everyone who's involved with the water and shelter. I appreciate, thank you for what you do. Anybody else?
Hello, my name is Holly. I actually really appreciate the juxtaposition of our neighbors' complaints about what's going on and the situation that our houseless neighbors and friends are facing every day. It's something we could all really unite on because it'll actually improve the quality of life for everybody if we're taking care of the most vulnerable in a kind way, in a way that we have the ability to. I thought it was really cool to see President Escobar at the Interfaith Rotating Shelter, volunteering there. And I think it was also, like now you could see with your own eyes the difference, maybe you already knew it, I believe that too, but the difference between the Code Blue shelter and this Interfaith Rotating Shelter system that is operating on a tiny budget, like Owen said, like $2,000. It's, it really makes it clear that when you have people who care about it, you can make a system that's pretty good without really having to pay that much money. And it was able to run for several months on volunteer labor. So it really makes it to me like, this is a choice to not do something. It really is a choice. Like, we can do it. And it's been proven that it can be done. So it's something we could really unite on. And I wanted to echo also the need for more garbage cans, public restrooms, more showers, increased emergency shelters, increased shelters. There's not enough beds at all available. And people need a place to be. It's not right. So, yeah. Oh, and also echoing about the rent increase cap that the city is allowing. I know New Brunswick is 80% renters. So it just seems strange that we would like do a policy that favors a 20% rather than an 80%. And, yeah, that's what I have to, thank you.
I volunteer, I volunteer as a member of the Sedan Street Reform Church. I'm a member of the elder. I'm an elder there. So it was my duty as an elder to serve others in need when I was there. And the church, different churches throughout those weeks that the shelter was moving from church to church, volunteers for those churches were the money. And it was very well managed. That's why I say thank you to the volunteers. It was well managed and provided those houses of worship with the information that they needed to be able to serve the unhoused gentlemen that were there with the different respects. So thank you. Anybody else wishes to address the council?
Yes, Charlie Cradaville, 143 Sedan Street, New Brunswick. As you know, I'm the editor of New Brunswick Today, community newspaper here. I have to start out by saying thank you to the New Brunswick Fire Department. We had a small fire on our property there. And they responded professionally and promptly and very grateful to everyone who was involved in that response. Also, credit where credit's due to the water meter reader who may have saved a man's life in the March 16 shooting. I think that should be acknowledged, that it was actually a public worker, a city worker, who transported the victim to the hospital and got him to get that care safely. So credit where credit's due to all the city workers who do the difficult work that's needed to keep our city going. I have to ask, now that Councilman Fleming's here, Councilman through the chair for Councilman Fleming, what do you have to say to the taxpayers who you're asking to pay thousands to settle your sexual harassment case?
As in the past, Mr. Cradaville, please, council. We are not making any comments. Mr. Fleming, we stand still to that standing there. We are not making any comments. Thank you.
Okay. Want to address the statement you made about the police officer suspended. I believe it's Officer Josue Plaza.
Last year, 2020.
Right, I do have a handout for the council. And so the first question is regarding the suspension for Officer Plaza. Was it paid or unpaid?
I'll find out for you.
Okay, I think that's important, you know. Paid, paid time off is a good thing. I could use some of that. But, you know, if you commit a violation and you're being disciplined, it's really not fitting to pay the person for the discipline. Also, you said it was a six-day suspension. The document you're receiving now, which I got from the city website, says it was an eight-day suspension. Can you clarify?
So it was my least day. I clarified. I would say eight.
It's eight days. Yeah, okay. And can anyone tell me when this document was posted on the city website?
I will find out for you.
Okay. And the reason I ask is because you said that this was done in accordance with all the proper policies and procedures of the Attorney General's office. But those directives say that this is supposed to be posted by the end of January. And I don't believe it was posted until late February at the earliest, perhaps even March. So I want a straight answer on whether the department actually complied with the directive or, like the body-morn camera directive, was late in their compliance. I think that's a fair question. I'd like an answer on that. I understand it might take you some time to get it, but we do have the deputy director here. Could he enlighten us as to the situation and the timing?
I will, I will get that information for you at this time. The next meeting will be before this.
Okay. I also wanted to ask about the theft of a motor vehicle from the police parking garage. I think I mentioned this before, and you might have seen it in the email you were copying on February 11. Officer's vehicle was stolen by someone who had actually already been arrested once that day. And I would like to know what the police department's message is to residents and visitors to the city about how they can feel safe about being here or bringing their cars here if the police parking deck is not even secure to the point where people are able to take a vehicle belonging to a police officer.
I will find out the circumstances around that.
And have to ask Tony Caputo, he's still the police director?
To the best of my knowledge, yeah.
Okay. Is he a New Brunswick resident?
He's no longer, right? He's no longer, is he, Mr. Caputo, a resident of New Brunswick? I don't use to be like, he and the premier, that's what I, no? No more. So we are, I will find out. We, I don't know. One say yes, one say no. So we're not sure.
Okay, so we don't know. We don't know if he lives in New Brunswick anymore. Tell me this, is it legal or legitimate for someone to be on the New Brunswick Parking Authority Board of Commissioners if they are not a resident of the city?
I believe that for that parking authority, residency is not a requirement. So he is allowed to be part of that board, Mr. Shami, yes.
Since he's the police director, he's allowed to sit on that particular board. Because he's a full-time police director and not be a resident of the city. It's in Title II. Could be part of the exceptions, correct? That's true.
So he's going to continue on the parking authority even if he doesn't live in the city?
Well, he's the police director.
Right. And that's a full-time job. I just want to clarify. That's full-time? How many hours is he putting in from Cape May?
Time yourself. I can do that. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. There's nobody else? I'll show you.
I just want to wish everybody and family a good evening. And a bad soul.
Councilmember Anderson?
We have some fun.
We already made a motion on second.
Is Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Castaneda? Councilmember Fleming? Councilmember Gaskin?
And wants to speak?
They're still fine.
So if we are going back, there's a motion, I will start at a second and we're in the process of voting to adjourn the meeting. So unless we have a motion to rescind the last motion, then we could start, if you allow me, because that's what I'm deciding is, to allow me whether I choose for me to talk or not. So go ahead. Is anybody making a motion to allow the gentleman who just came in to address the council?
Make a motion, allow him to speak at this time.
Can I have a second?
Seven.
So what may sir? Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Castaneda?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Gaskin?
Yes.
Councilmember Socorro Ludwig? Council Vice President Egan?
Yes.
Council President Escobar?
Yes.
Please go, you may approach the council.
Hello, my name is Yoshi. I live in Princeton, but I'm here to speak as someone.
I'm so sorry. I'm having a bit of difficulty hearing you. So can you speak up?
Hello, my name is Yoshi. I live in Princeton, but recently I had the experience of bringing someone to help him secure social services, in particular, approval letter for Section 8 from Social Services. But this is a common complaint, that a common grievance among many residents here in New Brunswick and middlesex, which is, Social Services does not have walk-in hours. And this is something, my understanding, has happened during the COVID pandemic. You have to make a phone call in order to make appointment, in order to go in. And there really is no reason for this. At this point, we all know like how to keep one another safe. I believe when I was there, I even saw like lots of masks so that people can mask up and protect themselves. And also, like, just the simple fact that you need to make a phone call means like this is this kind of barrier for people who have no phones. And let me ask you, the last time you saw an operating payphone anywhere around in New Brunswick? So I, this is a very simple ask. I'm asking that like walk-in services be restored at Social Services so people can get the very important services that they need. Thank you.
And I would say that the Social Services is from Middlesbrough County. So I encourage you to also talk to the Board of Commissioners. Nonetheless, I would make a phone call and let them know that this is something, a barrier that we need to address.
Thank you.
Yes, Councilwoman?
I'm just also, I want to clarify, Ms. County, State County.
But thank you. Okay. I would like to take motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, second.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Castaneda?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Gaskin?
Yes.
Councilmember Socorro Ludwig?
Yes.
Council Vice President Egan?
Yes.
Council President Escobar?
Yes.